Madam Manager, I'm going to call this meeting to order and I'm going to turn it over to you ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Tonight, kind of the preface of this meeting will be to look at revenues that Finance Officer Kyra Doister and I have projected so far to kind of let you know as a board what we're looking at. So if we can just dive on in, the one thing I would like just maybe look at the agenda after we get after debt service tonight, do you have an update on current budget that I'd just like to update everyone on? So with that, let's just kind of dive into projected revenue for fiscal year 1920. So the first sheet that you see in your packet, you're used to seeing this in your actual budget packet, and it's called Exhibit A. We'll go over this in more detail, but to give you kind of a glimpse of what we're looking at, for general fund this year, revenues projected to be at $3,499,027. Fire Department Fund revenue is projected to be at $851,139. Your Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is projected to be at $3,586,557. And your TDA Fund is expected to be at $135,000. With all four funds combined, your projected revenue at this point is $8,521,723. And just as a note, we are still collecting all expenditures, so that's why of course you won't see expenditures right away. The next two weeks will be us and administration working together to compile those numbers. We finished budget meetings last week with all department heads, but this is a hard number to look at as far as revenues. Any questions on Exhibit A?
Good morning ma'am.
Okay. Moving forward to Schedule 1, Page 1. If we could look at your current year taxes, you see a decrease there. So for the forecasted, the first column, you're going to see 1920 and current of 1819. So your current year taxes are projected to be at $1,927,527. Now for 1819, that was projected at $2,028,976. That's a decrease of about $101,000. Two of the biggest factors in that decrease is when we started those projection figures in the current year we're in now for 1819, we didn't have any account of how many releases or refunds or anything, age exemptions that that would take into account. And trending it over past audit, your audit collection rate is right at about 96%. So we do feel like the $1,927,527 is a true picture of what you will generate. On a positive note to that, as many of you are aware, this is a reevaluation year for the Town of Franklin, and this is nothing official as we're still working through this phase, but it does appear that your current rate, millage rate of .32 cents per $100 of evaluation will be enough to sustain current revenues off of your revow. So that's really great news. So moving along, if you want to compare first prior year, $25,000 for both current and projected, second prior year, $3,000 for both current and projected, third prior year, $500 for both current and projected, fourth prior year, $1,000 for current and projected, and then penalties and interest, $6,000 for current and projected. So with all your ad valorem taxes, that's $1,963,027. Other taxes in general fund include motor vehicle tax, which is at $100,000, vehicle rental tax, which is at $20,000, and local option sales tax, which is at $640,000. From other taxes, total anticipated revenue is $760,000. For unrestricted intergovernmental revenues, such your franchise tax, trend shows from what Ms. Doister and I have been researching, that you will see a slight increase in that. So that's why we're projecting that you would go from current of $440,000 in 1819 to budget year of 1920 to $450,000. So you'll have a slight increase there. For restricted intergovernmental revenue, Powell Bill is $125,000, same, and ABC Law Enforcement Funds at $5,000 are the same. So total unanticipated, anticipated revenue for restricted intergovernmental local revenue is $130,000. Any questions on Schedule 1, Page 1? Okay. Let's get to Page 2. You have your license and permits. So for 1920 zoning permits are estimated at $3,000. That's slightly a little bit more than 1819, just because we've saw an increase in your permits. Signed permits are a little less. 1819 was $1,000, we're projecting $500 this year. And then local business registration fee is at $3,000. So total anticipated revenue is $6,500. Other revenues, investment earnings, we've been trending that, and trend shows that that is up slightly. Current year for 1819 was budgeted at $2,000. We are comfortable in projecting $5,000 for upcoming budget 1920. Your next biggest hit line item is going to be your rents. If you'll notice, we've projected $8,000 for up and coming budget year 1920, and it was at 30 this year. Keep in mind, your biggest revenue contributor was the lazy hiker, which they have, you know, they have bought that, and they're owners of that, and we were, the town was compensated for that. Just bear not mind, that's your biggest decrease in revenue there. Your ABC Store profit continues to remain the same at $70,000. Your beer and wine tax at $17,500. Sale of equipment in miscellaneous is at $1,000. Sale of property, that's the note there, you'll see that there's nothing budgeted for this year, but the previous year in 1819, that's where the lazy hiker was, at the $235,000.
And where is that money sitting at right now?
That's currently, if you'll recall back a few months ago when we did receive that check, that's just currently sitting in your fund balance until you tell us otherwise. If not, at the end June 30th, that's just going to roll back in, continue to roll in your fund balance to you specify otherwise. Okay? Administration reimbursement, that's $79,500. Local occupancy tax, administration fees, $2,500. Court cost is $1,000. Special events is $5,000. Now you'll notice, and may be curious why special events is $5,000 and for 1819 it's $9,400. We always kind of underestimate how much we think we're going to take in for special events, because that's your pumpkin fest, it's really the only one we charge vendor fees for. So that's why we just always anticipate that revenue a little bit lower, but it normally ends up bringing in more. Insurance settlements, that's something you never budget for. However, in 1819, we did have $7,063. And then we've also had a wellness and health grant this year at $5,000. So total anticipated revenue for 1920 in Schedule 1, Page 2 is $189,500 versus 1819 at $462,463. Okay. Fund balance appropriated, so let's talk about that for a moment. Your fund balance appropriated, if you'll note, in 1819 was $1,000. The reason why that was reappropriated was at the end of the year, it was like June 30th, we had a citizen come in and was kind enough to donate to the police department $1,000. So that's why you're seeing that, that was reappropriated, since it was at the end of that fiscal year. Fund balance appropriated in Powellville is still at $450,000. So if you look at your total anticipated revenue for 1920, you're at $3,949,027, when in 1819 you were at $4,314,439. Three biggest contributors to that, just bear in mind, is your tax collection rate has went down, I think I calculated like $101,000. And then also your rents, that was a factor in it, and then you sold property this year. Okay? Questions on Schedule 1, Page 2? Yes, sir.
Two questions. So our actual revenue from taxation went down even though we increased taxes last year?
Yes, that's based on, like I said, that's based on a 95% collection rate, so it's not 100%. That's also when that was projected, when we started 1819, that didn't take into any account the tax releases and age exemptions that occur throughout the year.
And the revaluations have not set in yet? Or they have?
They have not, we've got those figures, but that won't be effective until 1920.
And what does that picture look like?
So that goes back to the beginning of this conversation. As of right now, it looks as though the current property tax evaluation as a whole will sustain the Town of Franklin on your current tax rate.
Okay, so it'll be similar.
You will be revenue neutral at .32 cents for $100 evaluation.
Did it go down?
So let's look at it this, yes. In all reality, if the town had not done the tax increase last year, you would be looking at the possibility of a four cent tax increase.
Because mine went up.
It's staggered throughout.
Uh huh.
But overall, it went down. And when we get a little bit further in this process, Ms. Doister and I have an actual Excel spreadsheet that calculates those formulas, and of course, by general statute, we'll provide that to you in your budget process.
And I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
The $1,000 that somebody was nice enough to give, they earmarked that for the police department, did we get that to the police department?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that the radio man?
No, he'll, he's coming next month. That was a really nice donation.
Okay.
It was nice. Good?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay. You're very welcome. So questions on, before we go to the next page, on fire revenue, any questions revenue-wise on general fund?
Just one real quick one, if I may.
Yes, sir.
On your sales tax revenues.
Uh huh.
Where was it?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you know, we still can, by state law, we can go for a local bill to add a quarter cent.
Yes, that would certainly be up to you in the council.
And that's something we might want to consider this budget year, is to factor in what a quarter cent would mean to us.
We can certainly look at that.
When we're talking about $640,000.
We talked about that one time before.
Yeah, and it wasn't very much.
How much it would be.
Versus the trouble of, to people to have it.
What was it, it was like $25,000 it would increase?
I don't remember.
It wasn't as much as, we weren't real exact.
Yeah, no, I remember nobody was like, "Yeah, let's definitely do that," and it seemed like a lot of trouble for.
Everybody cussing us every time they figured the tax.
But there's also some, we hope there's going to be some pending legislation about reallocation of sales tax revenues to municipalities.
Good. Wonderful. Any other questions on ad valorem and general side?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if this is the appropriate place to put it.
Okay.
When the meeting, the town-state dinner, there was something about a retirement plan that was going to be unfunded by the state. Has that passed, and already anticipating that moving forward?
So we'll let Mayor Scott, because I know you're on the board.
No, that's probably going to be on the back burner. I don't think the legislature has the heart to go forward with that right now. That seems to be the feeling statewide right now.
It seemed like it was going to saddle municipalities with the.
Well, it's a $300 million unfunded mandate.
And that's the fire department's, yes, sir. Similar to your LEO separation.
Yeah.
But to my knowledge, and from what I've followed on managers, listserv and all, that's right now, it shouldn't pass this year.
It's not a dead issue. It's not a dead issue, but it's, I don't think it's going to move forward this year.
Good. Anything else? All right. Let's look at fire department revenue. So fire tax, if you look at 1819, that was at $821,467. Now fire tax projection for 1920 is $845,700. So we are not requesting a fire tax increase. The jump in that revenue is also coming from the revow year. For the fire department's fund, revow actually helped this particular fund in that property tax values went up as a whole. And keep in mind that what makes the fire tax up is 50%, Franklin is unique, in that 50% of our budget comes from residents inside the city limits, and 50% of your budget comes from residents outside the city limits. So that's why you're seeing a fluctuation there, and of course, those numbers came directly from the county. So we are comfortable projecting that, I just didn't want to harm the board thinking we're asking for a fire tax increase.
Right.
Okay? Again, contribution and donations, we've not had anything, didn't budget anything. Rents is at $5,000, that is the tee house property that's located directly behind the firehouse that's rented. And then miscellaneous, this $1,132, that is state fund from the fire marshal that sends a yearly check, normally around April, May of each year, so that's something that the state does give all local fire departments. So the only thing different in 1819, of course, is you've had some insurance settlements, and then, that was $17,111. And then similar situation that you had with the police department, the same citizen who donated $1,000 to the police department last year, donated $1,000 to the fire department. So that's why you see that in fund balance. So if you look at the comparison for 1920 fire budget revenue, it's $851,139. And 1819 budget was at $845,710. Any questions about fire department projected revenue? So the last one is Schedule 4, Page 1, and this is your Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. So utility fees and staying on task with the current structure that the town looked at five years ago in order to stay in line with our debt service payments, and specifically with the use of our new water treatment plant Phase 1 being completed, you'll see that there will be a projection of a possible increase. So there's your difference there, and your utility fees for 1920 would be $3,429,057. Taps and connections would be the same at $25,000, reconnections the same at $15,000, availability fees the same at $12,000, dumping fees the same at $60,000. Macon County, that's $39,000. Just to reiterate what that is, that is where back in the early 1990s, the town partnered with Macon County in order for us to treat their leach aid, they would pay us a half a person's salary each year. So that's, it washes out in the expenditure side as well, but just so we're comfortable with where that is. Interest earnings, again, we've projected that those, trend shows that they'll slightly go up to $5,000. Sale of material and assets around $500. Miscellaneous, $1,000. If you look, and that's all for 1920, if you compare that to 1819, the only other two is you'll notice is insurance settlements at $7,468. Your retained earnings, that's rather high, at $578,589. Keep in mind, that was part to pay your capital project, Phase 1 of the water plant, so that's why that's elevated. You'll notice right now, nothing is marked in retained earnings, but again, that's because expenditures have not come in yet. So the difference for 1920, the total projected revenue in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund is at $3,586,557. And in 1819, again, keep that retained earnings in mind, it was at $4,117,938.
So what percentage increase does that number represent?
For utility fees, it'd be a 4%.
Because we will not have retained earnings?
You will. Again, just reiterate, retained earnings, the reason that's left blank right now is your expenditure side hasn't come in. So I don't know how much to put there that you would have to use out of that just yet.
When the money people ran the numbers for all the improvements we're making, they said in order to be able to pay it off, each, pretty much each year, you've got to go up a little bit, it seems like.
Yes, sir.
Is that about right?
Yes, sir. You nailed it. Any other questions on Water and Sewer Enterprise? So the next part of the agenda process will be to look at debt service for fiscal year 1920. And Kyra, feel free to chime in, because this is, this is very allowing you and all your expertise. I believe the next page of this will be the easier to be able to break that down, and that's where it looks at your total debt on all funds. So if you'll turn to the next page, if you look at the debt that the town has in Water and Sewer, you have your state revolving loan, and that is on the sewer side. So that's the $4,299,602.30, and that will be paid off in 2033. You also have your Bank of America in Water and Sewer side, that's partially for your public works building and some upgrades to some pump stations and water and sewer lines, and that debt service is at $1,528,169.27, and that will be paid off in 2025. Sun Trust as well, that's some improvements to some water and sewer lines, that was at $1,260,649.54, and that will be paid off in 2024. The newest one is this water treatment plant state revolving loan, this is Phase 1, and that total debt, it could change because we're able to save a significant amount of money, around $100,000, so that'll come up next at your next council meeting. But what that's currently projected on is $3,132,271.60, and that would be paid off in 2038. So your total debt for Water and Sewer is $10,220,692.71. Your general, your Sun Trust, is your police department, the building here at Town Hall, and that total debt is $709,115.36, and that will roll off in 2024. Your diversified, that is what we've been doing for the current software that the board allowed us to do a couple of years ago. This will be the last year you have to do a debt service payment on that, and that's $45,381.14, and that will be paid off in 2020. So your general debt service is only $754,498.50. The only other debt service line item you have is in your fire department, and that is financed through two of your fire trucks, and that will pay, be paid off this year as well. So that payment is $74,566.53. So if you combine Water, Sewer, General, and Fire, the total debt for the Town of Franklin is at $11,049,757.74. Questions?
There it is there.
What's the $709,000 owed to Sun Trust?
So that's the combination of this building here and also your police department.
Okay, so the two new buildings.
The two new buildings, yes, sir.
But that's only, we got four more years roughly of that.
Yes, sir.
Has that software been everything we hoped it would be? Is it been?
I'll defer to finance, just because she works.
Yeah.
It was a definite improvement, and I, you know, I think it will service the town for years, for years to come, what it can do.
Good.
Was it easier this year, doing the budget?
Much easier. So thank you guys very much. One other thing, if we may, before we open it up for discussion from the board, I've been working with Councilmember Collins, he's been really great to help secure this, and just wanted to bring it up before the board's attention. Last year we went through budget, the town council was faced with decisions in alternative of what we should do for the bathroom situation that the town was facing for festivals and events, and primarily picking on the square. Since then, Mr. Collins and I have reached out to Tim Crabtree at Crabtree General Store to come up with a solution, and spoke with Tim this week. And Mr. Crabtree is willing to, I don't want to say rent, but work with the town on a monthly basis, and he is willing to open up Crabtree bathrooms for all of our festivals and events, and all of picking on the square. They will clean it and take care of everything for $150 a month.
A month?
A month. So for a year.
What do we send, the flowers?
So for a year, that would be $1,800 a year. So one thing I would just like to get some guidance from council tonight is, in our current budget, we still have $23,000 budgeted for at the time, a restroom trailer. And what we would really like to do, since we've made a commitment to the streets department and trying to generate some revenue, and with sidewalk repairs and all, we would ask tonight if council would take into consideration allowing us to take that $23,000 from capital outlay equipment and facilities, and move that to part-time salaries in the streets line item budget, to try and get us some help, to help with mowing, to where we can have our crews, since this is your primary months to start doing sidewalk repairs, that would free up some of our talented workers to be able to focus on broader projects. So just wanted some guidance from council tonight on that.
I think that's a wonderful idea, and one thing that I'd kind of like to do too, if we can, one of the problems we're having also is disposal of trash. If we could put a couple of part-time people on some of our events like picking, what have you, it's amazing how much trash gets generated.
Absolutely.
At these things, and then on Sunday morning.
The aftermath.
Some of us are out, they're picking up trash, yeah. So that would be my only suggestion of where some of that money might possibly go.
As, I mean, I'm the one who was the biggest proponent for the mobile trailer, but given my understanding of where we're at with Crabtree, I think it's really going to also be open just day in and day out as well. And we're going to be able to put signage directing folks, and that's going to give us a bathroom on either end of the street.
That's right.
And that's about as good as any, as anybody can go. So we're fortunate in the employment area, where we've got some people who don't need to be weed-eating and pushing mowers. They're just much more valuable, and we have them on our staff. So if we can divert some of that money to get some college boys or whatever, to do some of just the heavy mowing and allow our more talented folks to do what they're more talented at, I think it's going to be a great advantage for the town. And I think Crabtree's scheduled to kick in Memorial Day.
Yes, sir.
Where that's our first picking. We really need to look at some signage, and then maybe some way to incorporate a partnership-type feature with this, where they can let, you know, know that we're working together on it, which would mean at least budgeting $150 or $300 a month or two to get us to the budget year of July 1. But I think it's, and I kind of ran it by Derek Roland, and, you know, I was saying it's a win-win, he said, "No, it's a win-win-win." Because, you know, the county had been willing to staff and keep open the courthouse, and the security element is getting stiffer and stiffer around the courthouse, so whatever level. And so with Crabtree and with the, what we have here, we won't have to rely upon the courthouse, so it's, it is a very, I'm real pleased that we were able to.
Thank you, Joe.
The county is paying, it's got an officer there, and it worked out very, very well.
Yes, but with the Crabtree General Store option, they probably won't have to do that.
Why not?
Why would they?
I think you would, you'd give us six then, and we.
Maybe.
And we're paying county taxes, Mr. Collins.
Maybe, maybe for the events.
That's what I'm talking about, for the events.
Not for picking.
Oh, yeah, I think for picking too, yeah.
Well, that'd be, that'd be for discussion. Yeah, that'd be.
Let's don't, let's don't ask them to not staff them. I know they're going through the discussion of how their security's going to operate. And if they want to keep it open for picking, I would encourage that, but that's going to come out in their talks about how they're going to staff it and all that, and how, I know that they just appropriated like $82,000 for extra people or metal detectors or whatever it was, so I don't think that we can make a decision to.
I think it was about $300,000.
I don't know what it was.
Three deputies, yeah.
But I mean, if it's open, that'd be great.
Yeah.
But this is an excellent alternative if they are unable to keep it open.
It's not an alternative, it's a next, it's a reality, and so it would be up to the county. But I just can't imagine, at least on picking, why they would be in the need to have two sets of restrooms, the way it's set up. But that's, you know, we're here on maybe a little different subject, so we're not going to drill down.
It's really nice of the Crabtree's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I think it's a great idea, day-to-day.
They have very nice bathrooms.
Wonderful.
Most people are going to prefer to go there.
Yeah.
So they don't have to go through a metal detector.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor and Council, I wanted to bring that up to see if it would, if the board would give management the blessing to start working with legal to draw up an agreement of what that would look like for Crabtree. And then of course, I could bring that particular aspect back to your main meeting if you desired. And then the second part of the request tonight would be if the board would, would be kind enough to look at reallocation of that restroom trailer into the streets budget so we could go ahead and start advertising for that.
Let me ask you this, Madam Manager, and on the human resources side, what would be the possibility of a, and maybe this because of liability and all's not, but what it would be where we could hire some students during the summer, and put maybe one of our employees supervising them, to get some money to go back to school? I'm thinking right now, a young lady I know that's trying to get from Southwest and a degree in radiology, and she's working ungodly hours. It looks like maybe we could, if we could help college students during the summer, I know the power company used to have such a program. It just seems like it would be a real help to some of our young people to have an umbrella of working with the town.
Absolutely. That's definitely something we can look at. That would be a benefit to all.
Okay. What's next, ma'am?
Can I get maybe a motion, or?
I'll make a motion to, I'll let you word the fund reallocation, but also to give you the authority to go ahead and talk to people and get an agreement.
Hire some people.
That's a motion.
I said it though.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council.
If I could piggyback on that, since we're talking about mowing, I noticed that Whitmire has begun the process of cleaning up. Is that specifically one of the places we're targeting to mow with the, with the extra help?
It has been.
I also noticed that there's a, the concrete block is moved, which is great. I'm a big fan of that. But there's a gate there now. Is that a permanently closed gate, or is that just while we're cleaning up?
While we're cleaning up. So the goal would be is, once we're completely finished with cleaning up and renovations, which will hopefully be in the next month or so, is now we can open that gate. Because the cinder block, I mean, you can't move that. And it looks much more aesthetically pleasing with the gate. But that would be the goal, is to eventually where you could have a loop through. The biggest reason years ago, when there was so much concern, was you had the abandoned home up there, as Mayor Scott, many of you remember, that had been burned. So now with getting all this cleaned up and everything, that would be the next approach.
Yeah, it was dangerous then. It's getting less and less dangerous by the day. I'd just say, let's keep, there's a lot of flowers around the house, so let's don't, bulldozes are completely flat, but there's a lot of neat old landscaping that still exists there.
Okay. Any further discussion on any of what we've talked about so far tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I still have more stuff to talk about in general.
Okay.
I don't think we have this, and I'd like to see it, I guess, under our streets budget or our maintenance budget. I'd like for us to have an actual line item for sidewalks on a yearly basis that we could say, hey, we're going to spend $40,000 on sidewalk expansion or $60,000, whatever that number may be, $5, whatever we can afford to do. As a specific line item, we're much more likely to actually get physical sidewalks on the ground rather than it being in a pool of money that is kind of getting pulled different directions. Is that possible?
Absolutely, that's possible. So what we can do is, a lot of your sidewalk repair comes out of your Powellville. So what we can do so the board can see that is, in your detailed section of your budget, we will just kind of drill down a little bit and allot X amount of dollars for the sidewalk repairs, so you'll actually be able to see that and work with that. So when you do sit down for your next work session in May, you may want to up that, you may think we've put too much, but we can drill that down to let you guys see that.
And can you have a recurring item yearly for Powellville?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, cool.
Again, on that note, is there DOT mapping, or do we have town mapping that shows how wide easements are off of streets so that we could know where would be actually physically possible for us to put sidewalks?
Some do and some don't. And I know that our land use administrator, Mr. Setzer, has been really good with his background in GIS to be able to locate that. So it's hit or miss with the streets. Again, that goes back from just when they were deeded over to the town years ago, and if the town recorded it properly. So some are hit or miss. But overall, we do try and, you know, if we're really interested in trying to secure that down, we can try and dig into that.
There is a knowledge bank somewhere.
I would expect you would find that when it comes to sidewalks, what you see is what you get. I just don't ever know that back through the past, we would have secured a six or eight-foot width and put a three or four foot. I just think that it's kind of got poured.
Well, that goes back to, I mean, certain streets that are state roads that don't have sidewalks, that are within our municipal limits. I mean, DOT should have a record somewhere that says, hey, there's 10 feet there. If there's 10 feet of DOT right away, in theory, we could put a sidewalk there.
Absolutely. But I thought if you was talking about Bidwell Street and Harrison Avenue.
No, no, I, okay. When there's already sidewalks, that's on the ground. I understand. We need to maintain those. But I still have this pie in the sky idea of people who pay town taxes should at least be able to smell a sidewalk within their living radius, you know? I mean, we have a lot of places where there's just, there's nothing. There's a ditch.
There is a rhyme or a reason for my suggestion, and that we're going to talk about getting some people to mow grass, because we got some folks who know how to pour some concrete and learning more and more, and that's going to free them up. Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Right.
Yeah, anything we can do to get more sidewalk is absolutely...
I mean, if we want to attract people to the town and actually increase our tax base through property values going up, we got to have an advantage to living inside the town. And right now, there's, there is none that I see of. I mean, you're much better off living just outside the town and getting all the benefits.
I'll now be driving through places, see if I can smell a sidewalk.
I mean, there has to be some kind of advantage to living in town.
I know, I'm just, that was a new phrase.
Fair enough. I'm not knocking the town. I love it. I live in town, obviously. But I think that it would lessen the animosity of people writing double tax checks every single year if they could at least say, hey, the town, I feel connected to this town. I feel connected to downtown. It's livable, it's walkable, it's a community-oriented place.
We just wish sidewalks weren't so darn expensive.
They are. Everything's expensive. That's why we've got a budget. And if we put something into budget for them, they're much more likely to happen.
Speaking of sidewalks, this is, I mean, I'm sorry to bring this up now, but I'm afraid I'll never think of it again. In front of the Sutton's Place on the way to the Lazy Hiker, did a tour, Women's History Trail Tour the other day, and one lady who was elderly said, this sidewalk is really, really uneven and really dangerous. I guess she almost fell. And I didn't notice it myself. She told me that when we got back, so.
That can be one we put on our list?
Yes.
Thanks.
Hasn't Justin gone through and mapped the sidewalks and like given them a number ranking of like the, how crucially he thinks they need to be repaired? I know he had talked about it a while ago.
He has worked on that, yeah. Yeah, he's worked really hard on that, so.
How many jobs does Justin have?
Several.
It's like all the employees of the town of Franklin, we all pitch in wherever we're needed.
I have another question, if I may. Our total debt load, I see fairly good news here in that we've got quite a bit of debt dropping off within the next, looks like four to five, six years. Are we anticipating any large debt loads down the road in the near future, 10 years from now, that will re-up this debt load again?
Yes. The only one, and that would be phase two of your water plant.
And what are we looking at for that?
So if you go back to when we started this in 2014 at the time, now granted, that's 2014, and as the council is aware, I think it's two months ago, you allowed us to enter into financial analysis with WR Martin to see. But now in 2014, when we looked at this, you were looking at a total for phase one and phase two of about $7.58 million. That was in 2014, so just keep in mind that materials and stuff could fluctuate over then, but that would be total for phase one and phase two, and that was in 2014.
And so that'll be under our water and sewer. Our water and sewer debt load for the foreseeable future is going to be substantial.
Yes, sir.
Our general fund looks like it's going to drop off pretty quick.
Yeah.
And may I address that a little bit too? I probably won't see it in the next five or 10 years, but at some point, we're going to have to start the permitting process of another water supply intake. Cartugie J Creek is eventually not going to be able to handle the town's demand for water. And as climate change keeps going on, we don't know what's going to happen right now. And so the permitting process is estimated that if we would start today, it would take five years just to get permits to go to the confluence of the Colossus Age in the Little Tennessee. And there, hopefully, that in the legislature, there is going to be some changing about annexation to where towns can go back to having a little bit more power when it comes to annexation. We hope that we're going to start seeing a little bit change in the legislature towards working with municipalities a little closer than it has been in the past. And Franklin's going to grow. We might as well just face that. And I think our demand for water is going to out-supply Cartugie J Creek within five, 10, 15 years. It's been pretty adequate up till now, but if you remember the drought, we got down to where we were just about pulling silt out of the Cartugie J Creek. So I think that's something to answer your questions, Mr. Culpepper. I think, yes, eventually, that's going to be the biggest thing that's going to be facing municipalities' water supplies. Atlanta's already got eyes on the Little Tennessee River. Lake Lanier is not going to be able to support Atlanta at the rate that they're using water down there right now. And that's, that's true, not only in your larger cities, but your smaller areas like Franklin. So I think that's something we're going to need to look at. Boy, it's going to be a terrible bullet to bite, but a town cannot survive without an adequate water supply.
So that's bad news, but if we're anticipating having to go up on our water and sewer fees on a yearly basis just to cover phase one, then I see that doubling increase rate to pay for phase two.
It's really not bad news because it's good news about, we've got the water.
Well...
It's just going to be a matter of bringing it to...
It's bad news from a taxing and having to pay for it standpoint. It's going to be expensive.
That's life.
I think whenever they budgeted for, they have to go up so much, so it's tied in with both phase one and phase two.
It is tied in with both phase one and phase two.
Right.
Your budgeting process probably won't be as, won't be a terrible expense as such, but at least we would have that paperwork in the drawer when we did get ready to move. I just don't think Franklin can survive the next 15 or 20, 30 years on Cartugie J Creek, particularly with the amount of development that's going on and will be going on west of town.
And if I'm not mistaken, that has to be paid for out of water and sewer fees.
Correct.
They can't slide money from the general fund, not that we would want to, but our water and sewer rates have to pay for that entire expansion or any future permitting or anything like that.
Well, eventually, Washington's going to have to go back and start realizing that we've got infrastructure problems nationwide, and they're going to have to re-look at where some of Washington's monies are going, like they did back during the formation of the Appalachian Regional Commission and some of these type things.
And right now, if I can elaborate on this, people inside the town pay a water and sewer fee. People in the ETJ or outside of the ETJ, the town water and/or town sewer service pay an increased rate. So if we were to expand the corporate limits, that will actually hurt our water and sewer fund for budgetary reasons.
It could, and then again, you're going to help your general fund, so it's half dozen to one, but there are, there are drawbacks to both.
Well, but still, also, the underlying theory was that the small-town people built the football field, so everybody who's playing on it. So my point is, if you expand out, they don't automatically get the same benefit necessarily unless we choose to allow it.
Okay, fair enough. So an expansion of corporate limits does not necessarily mean that...
Wouldn't have to.
A decrease in...
It wouldn't have to. It might because they would be, whatever, but it's not something that would automatically flow.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, anybody in favor of adjourned?
Did we want to talk about dates for a retreat? No?
Sure.
It's not on the agenda. Can we talk about it?
Sure, go right ahead.
Let's have a retreat. I like talking to y'all.
Let you facilitate.
I'm just trying to do, do my job and figure stuff out, you know?
When would you like to have it, Mr. Culpepper?
I have no, I have no dog in the fight as far as dates go, but I know this takes a while to get a date planned out, so let's talk...
We got 12 months, choose one.
I mean, I just, I thought we did it on a yearly basis, and if I'm not mistaken, I think we did it about this time last year.
Probably.
Did we do it at our last budget thing last time?
You did. I think last time we did it in February and April. From a staffing standpoint, the only thing we'd ask to consider is, if you wanted, since you are going to have another budget work session in May, if we could look either towards the end of May or June, just from a staffing standpoint.
Can we just get us through the budget?
That's all I'm asking.
And I'm backing them up on that. Let me tell you, you just cannot believe the amount of hours our town employees have put in on this budget. It ain't a thing of somebody coming up with a figure and throwing it out there and saying, here it is. They have really, really worked on this thing down to the nitty-gritty, and we all owe them for what they've done. And I don't think there's any other town around here that can brag like that, but we can. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you, it's a team effort from all our departments.
Appreciate it. Nathaniel, appreciate all you guys do.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think of stuff later, not right when it first talked about. When you talked about the Lazy Hiker, the sale, that 235, and you said it's going to, it's in the general fund, and it's going to sit there and let, and roll over unless we choose to use it.
This year.
This year?
This year, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Yes, if you choose to use it, you can choose to, well, it's the discretion of the council, of course, but for budgetary items, if you choose to use it, you have realistically until June 30th, and then it's going to roll into your general fund balance. But at any time, you can get out of your fund balance.
I just wasn't quite clear about what to do with it.
Absolutely.
That would be a good reason to have a retreat.
Eggs, there you go.
There you go. It's a good, good thing to put on there.
Y'all want to go to Grove Park Inn for $230,000.
So what's the rest of the, when's our next meeting besides our general meeting?
I believe it's May 20th, and this is when we'll have expenditures side. So if the council would like to start thinking between now and then some other items you'd like to see in the budget, I know many of you are real grateful we work together. If you see things that we can try and get it in, please let us know.
I have another question. Again, maybe it's pie in the sky, but if we got $2,000 in donations last year without asking for them, how hard is it for us to add a line on our tax bill, asking for a donation? Or just somehow let people know, hey, we'll take donations. If you want to give a donation to the fire department, the police department, the sidewalk fund, whatever, just to let people know, if you like what we're doing, you can.
Would the gentleman who, or the couple that gave the money, would they be willing to have a news article about it?
Yes, they are, they are working on that. So we'll have a little bit more information on that at your May meeting, a press release with photo as well.
So that's kind of a nice way to do it.
At least on a website to say, someone, these people contribute.
I think philanthropy in communities builds, I venture to say, bigger and better things than municipalities do. We just need to let people know, we're open to philanthropy. Let's, let's get that ball going. We have people here who have some means and some desire to improve the place. Let's open that conversation up.
Yep, I agree with you.
But that's, I think that's a nice slow key way to do it, you know? Get the word out.
Get the word, yeah.
That somebody has done that.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion on adjourned? If not, all in favor? Go home.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You and Kara both.